All right, we're going to go ahead and get started.
Great.
Want to go ahead and call us to order? This is the joint meeting between the Aspen City Council and the Picken County Commissioners for 7/19/22. Today's agenda is actually APCHA board interviews. We've got two applicants, and then we're going to have an opportunity for some discussion around housing issues. And we'll get started into it now unless anybody else has any comments. I will note for the record that we have all Commissioners and all council members in attendance, with two Commissioners being remote. Thank you for joining us, wherever you are. Let's go ahead and get started. We want to start with board interviews. So I see John's here. We're going to go ahead and do these one at a time. John, if you want to come on up, we'll start with you. You are reapplying for a board seat that you're currently in. We want to thank you, of course, for your service and thank you for your interest in reapplying and doing this more for us. The community has benefited greatly from your service, and we all really appreciate it. With that, in our packet, I believe you've already provided some answers to some questions. The one that I always start board interviews out with are, "Do you understand the roles and responsibilities of being a board member of the APCHA board? And do you have any conflicts of making the meetings that are scheduled?"
No, sir.
I didn't think you did. With that, I'm going to go ahead and look around to Commissioners or council members that wish to ask any questions. And I'll, actually, we'll open it up. John, if you have got anything that you'd like to say, I mean, you bring a lot of experience to this, so if there's any opening remarks that you want to make, that'd be great.
You know, I don't have a lot to say, other than I've enjoyed being on the APCHA board. I think I've been on there actually five years. I can't remember how long I've been on the board. Ultimately, I'm sure I've disagreed with everybody on the board on one thing or another, but I'm somebody that is a dealmaker in what I do in my real job, and so I always look for a consensus, always look for the solution that's going to take us the furthest. There's obviously challenges that we've faced as a board and continue to face. We've got some big challenges ahead of us, or the board does, and that's, you know, solving some of the problems with deferred maintenance on units. Some of it's downsizing people, you know, I'd call it rightsizing families to units, filling bedrooms. I think that's going to be a major task that we have to promote, have to work on, and have to provide solutions for. And, you know, I look forward to those challenges and finding out ways to solve the problems.
Often, when people are reapplying, it's one of two things. It's been so enjoyable and easy that it was no-brainer to reapply, or that there's still work to be done. It sounds like it's the latter for you, and I really appreciate that. I'll go ahead and look around the table, and we can start with any questions. John? Okay. All right, we'll start with Francie.
Hi, John.
Hey, Francie, how are you?
Good. I've enjoyed getting to know you, mostly through Zoom. We've been in a couple of live meetings together, but not many.
It's good to see you in person.
I know, it's really nice. You know, given that housing is the biggest issue in the valley, and APCHA is sort of the administrator of that problem, I'm wondering if you have seen a way for us to, I guess, streamline APCHA so that we have an easier relationship with both the people in our housing and in the community?
You know, that's interesting, because I think the relationship between community members and APCHA is strained. You know, you've heard it. I know you've spoken out at Woody Creek. And I don't necessarily think it's totally fair. I think APCHA's worked hard. You know, Mike Kondroski before Matthew came on had worked hard to make APCHA, bring some credibility to APCHA as far as rules, you know, maintaining the rules. It's hard when you have a system of whistleblowers to figure out where there are problems. And we all hear it, we all, you know, I live in affordable housing as well. So that's where I think a lot of that distrust comes, and I don't know how you get over that distrust, other than just enforce the rules as they're written. And we've done a lot of rule-changing, rule rewording in our meetings, trying to make them clearer, trying to make them more understandable. You know, probably one of the biggest frustrations as a board member is, you know, the stuff that staff brings to the board to work out, it's they're trying to put a fire out that they've seen an issue of. And some of it, you're not going to solve all the issues, and you're going to play on the fringes a little bit with those issues. You just need, you know, APCHA rules need to be written to cover 90% of the problems, or 90% of the issue, and the five that live on either side of the issue, you can't write the rules to. We've seen it. We've seen it in our board meetings all the time. And so I think it's, APCHA just needs to interpret the rules and enforce the rules the best to their ability. That's how they'll gain trust with the public. But like I said, it's hard when you live in a tattletale system of people telling on other people, right? So people have to have, in their own mind, some sort of honor code that they're going to live by the rules as well.
Can I add one quick question? So when we finalize the policy changes and we feel like we've settled all that...
I don't know if we'll ever finalize those.
Where do you see, what direction will we be going in after that, as a board, do you think?
Well, you know, it's interesting. In my position, in my real life, you know, we work as a bank with a lot of different housing authorities. Denver Housing Authority is a huge housing authority. APCHA's job has never been building housing. They've left it up to the different jurisdictions to build the housing. To me, that's a place where, you know, if you left that with APCHA, it'd be developing, finding, sourcing, you know, and having a vision to build housing. You're probably never going to get there. So to me, APCHA is always going to be an enforcement arm, right? And so it's putting the rules out, it's managing property, it's managing, there's a lot of what we do today, and that's who they are, or who APCHA is, who staff is, so.
Thank you.
Can I tag on to that?
Yep.
So you mentioned enforcement, and we hear a lot through the community where they feel there's inconsistencies in enforcement. Can you respond to that?
And I think that perceived inconsistency comes from jillion different deed restrictions, right? And people don't live under the same deed restriction. My deed restriction is different...
Than my deed restriction.
Than your deed restriction, or anybody else's deed restriction. So they were never written consistently. APCHA's done a good job. We've implemented a new deed restriction, so with every deed restriction signed and sale happening, that deed restriction goes to the new one, right? Some, you know, we've made changes to try to entice people to sign that new deed restriction, giving them, you know, increased caps on their property values and whatever else for work that they do. I think that's where a lot of that, that kind of public angst comes from, is that the rules aren't the same for everybody, and that's probably, I mean, that's a factor of having a system that's 40 years old.
That's a good point, John, thank you.
Rachel?
Yeah, just to tag on to that before my question. The other thing is that people can report what they consider violations or should be looked into anonymously, but then, once APCHA has looked into them, they have no way to report back that, "No, it's fine, that's allowed in their deed restriction," or "They've already gotten a leave of absence," or whatever it is. But you'll see the same person or persons calling again and again about that same issue, but there's no way to say there was nothing there. And so I do encourage anyone who does feel that there's a violation of compliance and use of the unit, call APCHA. Let us know. And if you leave your name, we'll let you know what the resolution is eventually. So there's that. You know, I was intrigued by your answer, and I really want to thank you for your contributions to the board. I think you really bring a good, solid voice, and as you said, there's always seeking the middle, we all are. What would you think APCHA needs more of, if anything, when it tries to tackle this problem and looking forward into the future?
Well, you know, APCHA, I think we've done a good job of adding resources, you know, whether it's enforcement staff, you know, it's scary that, you know, Cindy is the memory of the organization. You know, you probably need to replace, you know, her two-over, right?
A little succession planning?
So I think it's staffing, it's resources, it's a huge, you know, we have 3,000-plus units, right? Whether they're for sale, or ownership, or rental. And to effectively do the research and do the work, you know, we, as board members, when I first started, we were dealing with the appeals process and the enforcement, right? We've tried to take that off their plate. We've added a guy in the back of the room to do a lot of that stuff, right? But I still think there's a place for a board in that appeals process, kind of a board of your peers, almost like a judge, you know, a jury, which is an important part of our judicial system. So I think it's about resources and funds in order to pay people and hire staff. You know, you don't want to be a bloated organization, but I think we have people that work very hard, and probably, you know, Diane could talk to how hard she worked managing APCHA before Matthew was hired, and getting Matthew up to speed is probably no easy task as well, so.
Well, and as we know, APCHA doesn't really have a development function, as you talked about. It doesn't have a budget for development. But yet, as an APCHA board member, as we are, we often hear people coming in to talk about the shortfall. From your perspective in the business, or at the fire department, or others, what do you think about the housing issues and the shortfall overall?
You know, I'm lucky, because I work for a sizable organization, that, you know, we've decided to solve that problem on our own, you know, and we've taken free-market units and purchased them in different locations, and we'll house people that work for my company. I think a lot of that is going to the public-private sector and businesses. The bigger, you know, bigger businesses that have resources are going to be able to provide the solutions. SkiCo's a prime example of being able to provide the solutions, or at least some form of solution for their housing. Smaller businesses, you know, restaurants, you know, you know, my mother-in-law, my wife, they don't have the resources to be able to buy a housing unit for a store member, or a cook, or a waiter. That's where I believe APCHA kind of serves the purpose, right? The city, the county, the housing we've built. I worry that we, you know, I do think there's a tipping point where it's too much, so we've got to be smart about development, smart about sprawl in our, in our kind of, I call it, you know, the urban growth boundary, or whatever else. I can remember in 1982, I went to Colorado Springs from Spearfist, South Dakota, to go to an Air Force graduation for a cousin. And driving between Fort Collins and Denver, there were fields, right? Today, there aren't any fields, and I think we need to protect that in our valley as much as anything. So we've got to find the right places for housing, we've got to find the right places for density, and, you know, build, I don't know if you can ever come up with the right number, because you're never going to solve the problem 100%, and you've got to come up with what you're comfortable solving, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to Kelly before I come to you, Steve. Kelly?
Hi, thanks, and I regret I'm not in the room with you all for this important conversation. I have plans to visit my dad in New Jersey, so I'm joining you from the East Coast. And John, I want to thank you. I've enjoyed working with you on the board, and I've really found your knowledge of and understanding of financing and equity to be really helpful as we work through our conversations about how to maintain our units over time, and particularly to consider the challenges that the ownership units pose. And so it's been valuable working with you. I wonder, in the scope of APCHA's work, what do you want to get done in the next term? What are you hoping for yourself, for the board?
Well, you know, I've kind of alluded to it a little bit. I think coming up with solutions for the deferred maintenance problem we have across a number of units, I think, you know, you probably, you worry about it, because I'm guessing 20, 30% of those units have some real issues. I'm sure there's a lot of homeowners in that system that can adequately maintain and have done a great job maintaining their units, but the ones I worry about are the ones we hear about. And so coming up with a way to either incentivize people to take care of their units, providing, you know, some of it, maintenance is maintenance, and that doesn't add value, and that's where people look at it as they need the value. They should, whatever I put in, I should get out. That's not maintenance. And we've got to figure out a way to either grade the units, classify the units we're taking back, so somebody that's buying the unit that is, has significant deferred maintenance isn't paying full boat for those units. And that's what we see today, you know? Sellers that say, "Well, I'll just go to the next person," and that can't happen. We've got to figure out a way to get around that.
Thanks, Kelly. Steve?
A few years ago, we were kind of promised the world with the rollout of the new computer system that was promised to streamline the whole system and have the staff be able to easily track and manage all of the units and know how many people were in how many bedrooms, and make it really easy interface from the people applying for housing to apply, and all these different things. How has the system worked? Once in a while, I hear rumblings about, you know, it's maybe not all even put in place yet, or I don't really know. We haven't really had any data.
You know, I think as board members, and I hope that trickles up to you guys as well, from your constituents, but I think we've seen really good data out of that, out of the system. I want to say it's been in place for a year, year and a half now, right? I used it to reaffirm, you know, my residency or employment status, whatever that was recently. I thought it was fairly simple.
Qualifications.
And, you know, just like any system, there's going to be bugs. It was a custom-written computer program. It's not going to be perfect. But I think we've gotten good data, and I think it's spurned that conversation, or sparked the conversation on, you know, rightsizing. You know, I talked about it before. You've got people that had two kids living in a four-bedroom unit, and now those two kids are off to college, or even living somewhere else and, you know, graduated college. How do we, I think seeing the number of empty bedrooms we have has pushed us to have good conversations on ways to stimulate that rightsizing for people. And I think that's another important issue that we're going to have to deal with, too.
Board?
Hi, John, thank you for your service on the board for all these years. I have a hypothetical question for you. You mentioned that APCHA doesn't develop, they're not into the building business. Aspen has done all the heavy lifting on development, and I have a hypothetical for you that say that Aspen is in partnership with private entities for developing 100 units. And the private entities have come up with $50 million to put in towards that housing. Do you feel that those private entities should have a right of first usage on a number of units for a period of time?
If they have a need, I think that's a fair, I mean, it's a fair trade-off, right? $50 million of capital comes from somewhere, and I think it's a fair trade-off to give them opportunities. I think that's how a lot of the units have gone in the past, whether it's for sale or for rent. I think that's a fair trade-off. You know, I'd be interested to explore that more with how you could use that. You know, we, in my current job, we've done some tax credit stuff. We did the units down at the Roaring Fork Apartments down in Basalt, we had a great relationship with that borrower, so those are interesting avenues to build housing as well. Really good incentives for somebody that the tax credit's valuable to. I do worry a little bit with the tax credits that we're running into on the stuff, on the stuff that's up valley that people make too much money based upon, and you're just not finding enough low-income people to fill the housing, so you have empty, empty low-income housing as well. But I do think it's a fair, fair give, as long, you know, maybe it's 10% of the units, something like that.
Okay, so by extension, then, if the city of Aspen puts $100 million into development of some units, should the city of Aspen have right of first use for a period of time on those units?
I think the public entity and the private entity are two different entities. You know, I pay taxes, I live in Picken County, you know, in North Forty, so we're not in Picken County.
In the city.
I'm not in the city, sorry. But I still pay city sales tax when I go to the grocery store, I still pay city tax when I fill up with gas, hopefully not in Aspen often, but I do. But, so I think a public entity should be looked at differently. You know, Rachel and I had an argument about this, or not really an argument, but a discussion in one of our last board meetings. You know, she brought up the same thing with the lumberyard housing.
Actually, it was Burlingame Three.
Burlingame Three, but same thing, right? The, you know, somebody should, somebody that works in the ABC, let's say a mechanic at the Aspen Auto that spoke at that meeting, should he not have, you know, should he be down the list as far as housing goes? These are people providing a service for all of us. I mean, I take my car to Aspen Automotive to get stuff done. You know, I know a lot of people that do. They provide a service, you know, businesses in the ABC, businesses through Art of Valley provide a service for everybody. So they shouldn't be penalized because it's a county-city thing.
But should they be contributing?
But I still think it's important to say, you know, we are citizens of Picken County as much as Aspen.
So the town of Snowmass...
And Ward, a little bit, I want to push back a little bit on the housing, too, because it was the county building housing, you know, well before the city was building housing, right? Was it Centennial County Housing before it became City Housing?
Well, San Brona was in the county before it was in the city.
It was the 12 units of Hunter Creek, which were Silver King, which were allowed to, eight to go free market, and then they got the land for Centennial from that.
Right, right.
So it was kind of equalized what they lost.
So if I can follow up on that, Snowmass Village has a policy that you must work for Snowmass Village to move into properties that have been developed by Snowmass Village, and so you would object to that?
Well, so I look at Burlingame, I look at the lumberyard, I look at any of that housing. Snowmass is different because there's, it's 15 minutes to Snowmass Village, 20 minutes to Snowmass Village. You live in Snowmass Village, and you work in Snowmass Village, you're going to make that commute from Aspen to Snowmass. I can see where Snowmass is a little different. They created that housing. You have to work in Snowmass Village. We would love to have lived in Snowmass Village. I think we have an APCHA board member that lives in Snowmass Village but works in Aspen. But I see there's physical barriers that should be taken into account for that. So Snowmass, if you're going to work in Snowmass, you probably, I do the same thing in the housing we bought in Aspen, right? So my company bought two units in Aspen. I want my people working in Aspen, so if an alarm goes off, I work in an old building, there's sewer backups, whatever else, I want somebody, if it's not me, to be able to go take care of that.
I'd argue that somebody working or living at the ABC has more than 15 minutes to get to work if they come into Aspen.
Takes me an hour to walk.
John, just to dovetail off of that, what's your feeling about either developing or getting non-development solutions for housing throughout the county? Do you think that there should be housing that is developed in Basalt, parts of Carbondale, Redstone?
Well, there is housing, right?
But I'm saying going forward.
Well, like I said before, I want to protect our rural areas, almost, you know, the open spaces and what makes this valley special. almost, you know, the open spaces and what makes this, this valley special. Um, but there, there, there is housing being developed in Basalt, I'm financing a big project in Stotz Mill today. Um, we're financing a project in Carbondale in front of the city market. Um, so we're, there, there is housing being developed in those areas. Um, and they all, they all have an affordable housing component, you know, Basalt has, I think it's 10% of the units that are being built there have to be affordable, Carbondale the same thing. Um, I think we've also, also under.
Will they be under APCHA?
I think they're going to be under Basalt's, Basalt's authority. They, they have some restrictions as far as rents go, um, but it's going to, not going to be under APCHA's purview, it's going to be under Basalt's kind of affordable housing guidelines.
Aren't they restricting those to Basalt workers? Or at least some of them?
No, the rentals aren't. But they did buy some lots in, in that Stotz Mill development that they could build houses on for, for employees too, or sell them to an employee.
Thank you, John. Um, looking online at Greg. Is any, uh, last question from anybody?
Greg does.
Sure, I'd throw, uh, thank you for asking, Tori, I appreciate it. Um, a couple of things that came up, John, I, first of all, I really appreciate hearing from you, um, and, and, and your frankness here, this is great, so thank you very much. Um, and I, I also appreciate your, your service, I don't know how many years you've been doing this, but, um, clearly you've been doing a great job there, so thank you. Um, you know, a couple of things you brought up are, you know, tackling deferred ma, tackling deferred maintenance, tackling rightsizing, uh, cost of deferred maintenance, uh, in certain, say 30% of the units have a situation like that.
Do we have a number for that?
Uh, that was one of my questions. Um, and then also I'm, I'm intrigued by the conversation about other possible ownership and development models. Um, you know, and I'm, I'm just wondering if you've thought of other ways to, to crack these eggs, how to make this work with financing and ownership coming from elsewhere? Any other thoughts on that?
No, I, 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 you know, I haven't really thought it, thought hard on it. Um, you know, like I said, I think private entities are going to solve their problems, school districts, you know, I mentioned a few, but school districts doing the same thing. You do have developers that are, that have good ideas and are, are looking for ways to, you know, and then some of it's, the developers I know are looking for ways to, you know, enhance their, their, their for-sale or their speculative for-profit project with, with an affordable housing component, so they, you know, it's, it's to get it approved by, by, by city staff and by, by you guys or county staff as well. But, um, I think, I think there's going to be solutions by a lot of smart people in this valley that'll come up with housing one way or the other.
If I could tag onto that a little quick, Tori, is, um, can you give me an idea of the number of affordable housing units in, in the entire affordable housing sphere in our, in our valley between Snowmass and private and what APCHA has under its authority? You know, what's out there? Can we know?
We throw around a number of 3,000 plus.
That, that's our inventory, about 3,200.
APCHA inventory, yeah.
Greg, some people who haven't deed restricted theirs in Picken County maintain them as affordable housing, but they don't have a deed restriction on them. So some private entities are outside of the APCHA system, some that have been approved, say through land use, like, uh, Aspen Valley Hospital, would have had deed restrictions on those. But no, we don't track the, um, the, the great many throughout the valley outside of the county, uh, should there be any, and what their deed restrictions are.
And that includes Snowmass Village and, as you said, the hospital, the schools, other private entities, we don't, we don't know what's there doing.
Snowmass has its own housing authority.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Greg. John, thank you so much for your time, thank you for the time that you've served and your willingness to serve again, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
The longest board interview I've ever seen. The longest board interview I've ever seen. Oh, here comes another one. Chris?
Well, people just wanted information about APCHA.
Yeah, yeah. Come on up.
Thank you.
Chris, good to see you.
You too.
Welcome back. Um, as I started with John, I start with the same question, you understand the roles and responsibilities of the APCHA board members and you have no conflicts with making the scheduled meeting times?
Nope.
And for, uh, board's information, would you remind us about your service on APCHA? You, you've, you previously served, what were the years that you were on?
That's a great question, um, and I can't remember. Somebody asked me that earlier. Um, I want to say it was 17, 18, but I could be off a year in there. Um, I served on the board right up to the end before it was reconstituted, uh, with the new elected officials, um, excuse me. And then, uh, but prior to that, uh, I served on the ad hoc Housing Frontiers Committee that, um, was, was a nonofficial sort of, as Adam Fish like to call it, a coffee club. It was sort of, that we, we focused on some of the higher level issues that, that actually John was just talking about, cap reserves, deferred maintenance, um, AMI, area median income, stuff like that. Um, and I was on that for probably 2014 until the time I joined the board.
Thank you. Uh, look around at commissioners and council members for questions to start, we'll start with Skippy.
Hey, good to see you, man. A couple of questions, just as a, a baseline, so I know kind of where to poke here, since you've been off the board, have you been following the board's actions, you know, what's going on?
Yeah.
As I recall, correct me if my characterization's wrong, you know, the, the, one of the big issues for you previously was the IGA or the governance structure of the organization. If that is the case, does that, do you continue to believe that that's a really important focus? And, um, you know, if your mind has changed, why?
Sure. Um, you know, I think, uh, so I'm not, I'm not sure I would say my mind has, has changed, but, um, I've been involved in some level of affordable housing for 20 years plus. So before I moved out here, I was involved, I ran a nonprofit in Baltimore, uh, we housed opportunity youth, I worked for Habitat for Humanity, I came out here, we just talked about some of those things. So, you know, I, I would not get hung up on the IGA itself relative to the importance that APCHA, uh, the role that APCHA fulfills in the community. Um, you know, I, are there some tweaks that I think can be made? Yeah. Uh, I think one of the things that I followed that I've been really pleased to see is, um, we spent a lot of our time in the previous iteration of the board on enforcement actions, probably I'd say 80% plus. Um, and those were heart-wrenching decisions, they were hard decisions, they involved people's homes. Um, we had to make decisions we didn't necessarily want to make from a humanitarian standpoint, but we had to make them relative to, um, the letter of the law and relative to the policies that were in place, just to protect the integrity of the program. Um, with the enforcement officer, you know, with bringing Mick on to take that load off the board, I think that has been huge. Um, and it's really allowed the board to focus on some of these strategic, um, policy discussions, um, and that's why I joined the board in the first place, and that's why I want to reengage, because I think, I think that's the exciting part of the board. Um, you know, it's not, um, again, I think, you know, it, John, John just did all the heavy lifting, you know, I, there's nothing that John said that I would disagree with. Um, and, uh, you know, so from the perspective of, of, is the board a point of last resort? You know, I know there's a, a case before the board right now, um, where, as John said, like they effectively act as a de facto jury. I think that's important, um, for that to still exist, but for the board to really focus on policy discussion, um, and, and, um, strategy going forward, um, which it has been. Uh, it's, it's a long answer to your question, but, um, uh, the IGA and the rewrite of that has not precluded any of that from happening. In fact, I think some of those things have helped a little bit.
That, that's super helpful. So it leads him to the second question, which is, now that, let's say that 80/20's flipped and 80% is policy, do you come in with particular goals, aims, or outcomes that you would hope to help push forward, facilitate? And if so, what?
Yeah, and again, it's, it's hard going second after somebody, uh, you know, and I've got utmost respect for John, uh, and I think he nailed probably the two biggest things, uh, which is, which is basically the rightsizing of, of homes. You know, we have a lot of folks that are, are effectively empty nesters, so they're sitting on much larger units than they need, than they need. Um, so how do, how do we create an environment where we continue to provide housing for those folks that have been a part of our community for 10, 20, 30, 40 years? But give them an opportunity to have a smaller unit that they can still live in comfortably, be part of the community, um, and free up those units for, uh, as, you know, the younger generation that, that do have families. Um, I think, um, I just touched on cap reserve, capital reserves, deferred maintenance is just, is huge. How do we start to integrate that from a policy standpoint? Um, one of the things John didn't mention that I do think is important is we're coming out of a decade of a really low interest rate environment, um, and I think that has, I think there's some things around that that haven't been addressed, um, that are going to start to come to the forefront. So one of those, especially in the last 12 months, we're looking at the highest inflation rate since, uh, the early 80s. You know, appreciation on APCHA, um, is, is capped at 2% or CPI, but we're maxing out that 2%. We haven't seen that, we haven't hit that 2% in probably 15, 20 years. So we're going to start to see some growth, just some organic growth in prices, um, in APCHA inventory, um, that I don't think's being talked about. AMI was in, uh, was instituted, area median income, um, kind of relative to HUD standards about, I want to say, uh, we did that when I was still on the board, so it's about 24 months ago. But, um, I think we need to take another look at that. And, and how do those, those income caps, how do they fall, how do they shake out relative to Picken County? Because, you know, um, some of those numbers are still a little, um, they need to be looked at a little bit more closely. I'll give you an example, I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, so don't hold me, but for example, you know, a family of four making, I, I don't know, I think it's, I think it's close to 100,000 now, is at like 50% of area median income. So on its face, sounds 100 grand, doesn't sound like a bad salary, but to support a family of four in this valley is still impossible. So how do we start to reconcile those income thresholds with, uh, the pricing of our inventory? Which, you know, and then turn and leads to, you know, every time we have somebody applying for a home, uh, we've got folks that are, you know, 30, 40, 50, like you, you can look at the list each week about how many people are in line for those homes. Um, and I think all this ties together because again, just in the last three, four weeks, uh, and John can speak to this better than I can, but just mortgage rates have more than doubled just in the last month. So what's that going to start to do to our population? Um, and this is on the ownership side, not on the rental side, obviously, but how's that going to start to affect folks who want to buy in? Uh, can they even afford a mortgage that they potentially could have afforded six months ago? Um, so those are the kind of the big, the big three things for me.
Awesome, thank you. Rachel?
Sure. Thank you, Chris, for your interest in housing and your past service and, um, for following, continuing to follow the issues as they're going forward. The community plan has been a guiding document for us as the city council and for me personally, um, that, uh, hopes to see, and actually, you know, we have it as part of our packet, but, uh, it, uh, says very clearly, uh, we continue to use the same language from the 2000, uh, the original 93 community plan, that this is about a sustainable community as much as it's about a workforce. And, um, to be clear, both of the taxes the city uses, use the language, um, affordable housing, they do not use the language workforce in them. Is that a value that you uphold as well, that to be able to satisfy the arc of a worker's lives, there's times when they might need bedrooms for children and there might be times when, uh, they've worked here 35, 40 years, they would deserve to retire here as well?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, and I think it sort of touched on that a second ago where, um, you know, uh, I think it's really important to provide opportunities, so I just, you know, let's just take some hypotheticals. Um, you know, so if Burlingame Three, um, comes online, um, and I, and I can't, there's been a few iterations of that, or the lumberyard, for example. Um, I think that folks that are currently housed, uh, as part of APCHA, ownership or rental, who have units that are larger than they need, um, should be given right of first refusal for that next set of units, just as an example. Um, so if you're currently living in a three-bedroom and there's just two of you because the kids have gone off to school, uh, you should 100% be given right of first refusal, um, for a one-bedroom. I also think you should be incentivized for those units. You know, our new cost to build now is, you know.
Astronomical?
Yeah. Um, I mean, 12 months ago was about 500,000 on average per bedroom, uh, today's numbers are probably looking closer to 700,000 with inflation con, construction cost. So, um, I personally, and again, this is outside of the scope of APCHA, but I fully support an economic incentive to have those folks move out of their home, because they can't recover it through the resale of their home.
That's right.
Um, but I would have no problem writing a check, and again, please don't hold me to these numbers, but you know, writing a check for $100,000 or something in addition to the resale of their home to encourage them to downsize, because it's a lot cheaper to write a $100,000 check than a 700.
We, we've, um, been discussing that at the APCHA board at some level, and I think the city has committed, at least three to five of the new Burlingame units potentially would be that way. We have run into some issues with single people saying, but now there's no, no one-bedrooms for me for a very long time to come. Um, and, uh, the other question which I've raised, which I think is valid for the APCHA board to consider, is should there be some sort of measured benefit to the new family moving in? What if the winner of that unit is 50 and going to retire in 14 more years, or their two kids are 16 and are going to go to college and you've just paid $100,000 to buy a unit that will work for that family for two years, but you're going to have the same move-out problem in a very short time?
Yeah.
Because there's no way to allocate that afterwards.
Yeah, I mean, it's a hard question. I mean, and, and I think the answer is harder. Um, you know, I think one thing I, I would just clarify though is I don't think that, um, you know, I don't think that affordable housing, I do think it, it is a, um, luxury is the wrong word, it is, and benefit is the wrong word, um, it is a, it is an honor and anybody who, who gets it, um, should treat it as such. Um, you know, I was lucky enough, what allowed me to move here in the first place, I lived in a 300-square-foot, uh, APCHA rental unit over the Aspen Dilling News, um, over our Junea, I never turned on my heat for three years. Um, uh, and then I was able to move from there into Burlingame and then, um, I was lucky enough to, to buy free market. So I've seen, uh, all, uh, I've seen a progression, I've seen all components of that. But I do think it's important that if somebody comes in and they're 55 years old, um, they just moved to the valley and they happen to, you know, they win the Powerball, they, they, and I will call it win because it.
They wouldn't be in the first tier unless they'd worked at least four years.
You're, you're right, they wouldn't, but statistically they can still do it. And it does, it occasionally happens where they can, um, you know, uh, get a place, I'll use that term. Um, I do think that we need to take a look, and I, and I know the board was doing some work on this, about, uh, how long you can stay in a place post-retirement relative to your service time in Picken County. So for example, you know, if you've lived, worked in the county for 30 years, even if you weren't in, in employee housing, you know, and then you, and then you, you earn a place, uh, when you're 55, that's great, you can retire in place until you, until it's your decision to leave. But if you, but if you win that place when you're 55, should you receive the same benefit if somebody who's been a part of our community for the last 30 years? Um, I, I don't think that is true.
Legitimate point. Do you think we should try to build a move-to place that's specifically designed to entice those people rather than saying, hey, you have priority for this third-floor, one-bedroom unit somewhere they don't want to live?
You know, I think that gets into, uh, a philosophical discussion that is, uh, probably outside of what APCHA will ever do, because APCHA's not in the development business. Um, so that question is probably better left to our elected officials on the county and the city side.
Thank you.
Sad as an elected official.
I don't see hands up from Greg or Kelly, but I'm going to look at you at this time.
Steve had his hand up.
Okay.
Sorry.
Kelly and then Steve. Thanks, Kelly.
Yeah, uh, Chris, it's good to see you and good to hear from you all. Um, and, and I, I can tell you are following and have very thorough answers, so I appreciate that. Um, you and I sometimes butt heads, which I appreciate and, and never mind, but, um, could you just speak to how you approach conflicting groups since, um, I don't think we ever crossed over on the APCHA board together? Um, and I'd like to understand that about you better.
Sure. Um, you know, I'll turn around, I don't know if John's still, yeah, poor John's still sitting here listening to me talk. Um, you know, um, I can specifically think of one instance, uh, in the prior iteration of the board, where John was the lone wolf, sorry, John, picking on you, uh, the, the lone voice, um, and, uh, we were looking at a new fine structure. And, um, and, but I, um, and one of, some of the points that John was raising at the time was that some of the new, um, the new fines were going to be too high relative to, uh, just the working-class folks that, for the most part. working-class folks that for the most part are in APSHA. And I think for me, that has stuck with me because, because there's always two pieces to that. So, the way that I handle it is I listen, you know, try to keep an open mind to the best of my ability. But I think it's always important to listen to your colleagues because they come from a, a different background, they come from a different perspective, and, and oftentimes they, if you just, if you sit still long enough and you just let them talk, they may not be able to convince you, but they will often raise valid points that you haven't thought of before. So, listening to me is the most important thing, to just listen, take it in and learn. And sometimes you may change your opinion, and I think it's okay, because that's what you should be able to do. And sometimes you won't, and that's okay too. But it all starts with listening, so hopefully that helps answer.
No, I appreciate it, and I have always appreciated, you know, I think you're a critical thinker, so thank you. I also want to ask, you know, I personally think that APSHA could be doing a better job in outreach and in diversity, and I wonder if you have any thoughts about those issues in terms of APSHA as a forward-facing, public-facing organization?
Yeah. Yes. You know, I think, I think it might have been Francie who asked John the question, sort of like, what can APSHA do better? And I, on a very, very regular basis, talk to friends, people that have been here 10, 20, 30 years. And so, I think, I think there's sort of two parts to your question, Kelly. So, one of those is the outreach part. To this day, I am shocked by people who should know better, that conflate APSHA, the organization tasked with management enforcement and policy setting, with the development piece, which most recently has been the city of Aspen, although the county has been involved with, you know, stuff at like the Phillips Trailer Park and stuff like that. But, they don't see the distinction between the building and the governance. And I think that is something that APSHA can do, needs to do a much better job on, of just educating the public of what's the difference between those, between the people that build the stuff and the people that manage the stuff, to put it very succinctly. You know, on the diversity side, I think that's, again, a larger question. I think it's, I think the reality is it's a function of, of who our community is and just what it looks like. You know, in a prior life, I was in the finance world, so my background, I still hold an active CPA license, but in my present-day life, I work as a photographer. And for all my clients, to a T, we constantly want to show diversity, you know, with the folks that are in images. And it's very difficult to do that in our county. It's, it's, and you have to make a concerted effort. So, it doesn't mean that you can't do it because it's not, because it's too hard, but it does mean that you have to make a concerted effort. And I don't think APSHA has done that in the past. Seth?
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chris. Good to see you.
You too.
Thanks, Kelly. Steve?
Okay, Chris, hi. I haven't seen you in a while. I was going to ask a similar question. I think you probably adequately answered it about what, what you would do on APSHA now differently than what they are already doing. You've spoken to that quite a bit. Speaking about essential workers, there's a lot, some talk about trying to prioritize housing for some essential workers, and then the question is, well, who are essential workers? Some are in public safety things like police officers and teachers and firefighters, bus drivers, nurses, medical people, those, those things are fairly obvious. Some people who own companies maybe think that their workers are essential workers because they need them to run their businesses. So, do you have any thoughts on how, should a priority system be set up that would prioritize essential workers to get housing? Or do you think it should be up to the, the entities who are hiring those workers to be the, the main source for providing that extra housing for, for their essential workers?
Yeah. I think that's a, can be a slippery slope about, like you, like you just said, about defining who is essential and what is essential. Could be mistaken, I'm going to look at Skippy and Rachel, but I believe that there is a provision in the current APSHA guidelines for essential worker policy. And I say that because I was on the board when we wrote it. So, so there, there was, and I, and I don't remember the nuts and bolts about that, but there was a provision that helped folks, and we identified who those folks were. We went through a big process and a lot of discussion about who those folks were. And, and they were, to a large extent, our law enforcement, our fire, our paramedics, and I think doctors were in there, but I can't remember.
EMT.
EMT-type folks. So, so unless that's changed, and I, and I just, I don't know, that discussion has been had a lot in the past, and, and we did address what we felt, and I say we, speaking in the past tense, as, as the APSHA board at the time, who, who were essential workers in the community. At the same time, I think, you know, AVH has done a really good job, and the Fire District with the new build-out, I think at North 40, they're also, I don't want to say taking matters in their own hands, but they're also recognizing that, that APSHA isn't the end-all, be-all. So, you know, I don't think there's a single answer. I think it's a multi-pronged approach. I think if you start to get down into, you know, you know, you know, a company like, I'll just make something up, say like Servpro or somebody, you know, who's, who's dealing with sewage backups or, you know, or, or, you know, or is it, is it somebody who works at Michola, you know, or is a server, is a server essential, you know, so I can have my beer at the end of the day? Like, I don't know how you get, I wouldn't feel comfortable outside of the folks that I would say are involved with life-saving, you know, law enforcement, EMT-type stuff.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Steve. Ward?
Hi, Chris. When we interview candidates for APSHA, it, it's an opportunity for us to revisit all the things that we've been thinking about for the last few years. So, you're going to get some of them here. Several of them, I think there's, Rachel brings this up often, a distinction between workforce affordable and community housing. My position is that workforce housing provides community through their families, so we get community through workforce housing. I, John, I think correctly identified that there, there are a lot of different deed restrictions out there for units that have been selling for the last 40 years. There's a voice in our community that feels that people should be forced out of their housing if they become, as you say, empty nesters and they have a couple of spare bedrooms. I'm curious how you react or how you respond to, to those forces that, that are demanding that, what I think in essence is voiding a contract that was entered into when those people purchased their units.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll just, I'll sort of repeat what, what I had said when I answered Rachel's question, which is, you know, and I'll just make it crystal clear, like, under, under no circumstances would I see a scenario where APSHA has the right to void that contract, to void that deed restriction. You own it, you live in it. End of story. But, I do think there is an opportunity for APSHA to create guidelines and an incentive to encourage those folks to downsize, but they should never be forced to. They own their home. I'm a 100% believer in property rights, as long as they're the owner.
And they keep working until the retirement age.
Well, if they retired, so, and, and just, and as a total side note, Ward, the reason I actually got involved with, with Housing Frontiers, or with APSHA, you know, prior to APSHA back in 2014, I think, looking around the room, Rachel, I think you were the only person, you were on city council at the time.
I'm too old for any of this.
I sat on that for a while with Adam and...
So, no, 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 so, but Rachel, you were on city council. So, at the time, I was actually a little upset with...
Actually, I was on BOCC.
Were you on BOCC?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So, APSHA passed a new rule that raised the retirement age at the time from 65, 67, and to, to match the new rules with social security and things, I think recently it went backwards. But I reached out to the city and I said, I, I take issue with this because what if I worked really, really hard my whole life and I get to retire at 65? Now you're telling me I have to keep working to 67 to stay in my unit? So, that's actually like a little personal history. That's how I got involved with, I reached out to the city and they said, well, if you feel strongly, why don't you just start coming to the meetings? So, yeah, so I'm a firm believer that it's yours, you work for it, you own it, done.
Yeah. Thanks, Chris. I'm curious, you know, this cap reserves has been going on forever. I don't know how we're going to solve it, if we're going to solve it, but that, that covers common areas. John mentioned maintenance and, you know, the individual units have maintenance needs. And when units are purchased at a subsidized price, they, they get a better value than free market did. When they go out for maintenance, they're paying full market value. Do you have any ideas on how to make maintenance of individually-owned units affordable?
Yeah, so I, I'll restate that question, which is people buy into the program at a discount, because it's subsidized through tax dollars, but all maintenance, all repairs happen at, at free market rates. So, we have talked about for years, I mean, like, almost, well, like, years, about a couple of different ways to address that. So, the answer specifically to your question, Ward, which is, how do you address that? I think that there's some bulk buying that can be had, which, to my knowledge, has never been really vetted and, and implemented. So, simply to the fact that if there was a group of contractors that basically had preferred status through APSHA, as certain things came up, be it, you know, window replacement, you know, and, and I'm not talking like basic, you know, I'm not talking like, like wood trim and basic stuff, I'm talking like, like large-scale capital projects. If those vendors were on the list and they, we went to them first in lieu, in exchange for them providing discount for those services. So, basically, you know, if they're a contractor and they know that, that they're, they're going to do, you know, two, three, $10 million worth of business a year, they can, they can pull their rates down. So, we've talked about doing that in the past. So, I think that's, I think that's one option. I think there's a larger question to your question, which is how do you encourage folks to maintain their units? Because they don't get it at resale. They don't get it back, and that's always been the thing. And that's why there's been such, for some, not all, but for some units, some dereliction in the units. I don't know if the, I haven't seen this, because this was just passed last week, I think. There's a new House bill that's coming down that was just signed into law by Polis that's going to affect capital reserves in the state of Colorado. It's going to falls under Kiowa. It's a, it's a big deal. It's one of the largest changes to capital reserves in a long time. Part of that is going to require different levels of new cap reserve studies, and it's also going to require a certain level of reserves for new builds, so I'd assume that the city's starting to look into this. So, if you haven't seen it, I'd encourage you to check it out. It goes into effect, I think, 2024, so there's like two years for this to happen. But I think that there's a way to address some of these larger issues through the buy and sale process. So, APSHA, the tail end of my term, or the tail end of the, the board swapping out, was we were really starting to delve into minimum maintenance standards. And I, Steve, you asked, I think this is another really important strategic direction for the board to, to be involved in. And I know you, and I know you have been working on this.
We have an updated deed restriction now with more.
And I think, I think there's an opportunity for more on top of the more. And, you know, it can't be onerous, but there needs to be some, some baseline to, to what that maintenance is, and holding that seller accountable to what that is. And, and if, and if they're not accountable, then it comes out at the sales price. And I think the same can be said of, true of capital reserves, because the reality is anybody who owns a unit, they're responsible for investing the capital reserves of that HOA, and, and everything we're talking about here, except for a few properties in the North 40, they're all part of the HOA. So, if the HOA is not funded properly, again, this is, this is going back four or five years, there's a mechanism to help make that HOA whole, and help make this capital reserves whole, which then help fund the deferred maintenance at the point of sale. I don't know what the magic number is, but just again, pick any random complex, if they're only 10% funded in their capital reserves, and they really should be 30% funded, and that's, you know, then that's money that should be coming out of the sales price. Because in effect, that owner hasn't been contributing to, you know, either to the deferred maintenance or to the future maintenance of that depreciable asset.
I'm going to hit you with the same question I asked John. John took a position on his application on this, and I'm going to ask for your take on it as well, that contributors and stakeholders that are putting in funds towards a development, do you think they should have a right of first usage, whether it's city of Aspen or city of, town of Snowmass Village, or a private partnership?
You know, I'm going to take the easy way out and say, I agree 100% with what John said, but I'll restate what he said, which is, if it's a private entity, so if we're talking about SKICO, you know, SKICO says, hey, we're going to write a $20 million check for a new development, then with the one caveat, that everybody in that complex meets the, the criteria. You know, I don't think, you know, not that Mike Kaplan would probably want to live in a condo next to me, but, but as long as he meets the criteria, then, then absolutely, I do think that they get right of first refusal. If it's paid with tax dollars, I don't, because I live in Snowmass Village, but you know, I paid Picken County mill levy, so, you know, and I pay sales tax at City Market and wherever else I shop in town, if I go to the Ute, and those tax dollars go, a percentage goes in the same bucket. So, I should have the same, I should be part of that same level playing field as the person who lives and works in, in the city of Aspen.
Thank you, Chris.
So, as we go forward, and rentals at Trustcott Place or the very affordable housing that's going to come online with Burlingame 3, should that be eligible for the business owners in Basalt on the Picken County side of Basalt who do not contribute anything to the Picken County, to the sales, excuse me, sales tax or otherwise, to the creation of affordable housing? Should the new Burlingame units be sold to people who may reverse commute to Redstone because it's the only real affordable housing coming on, online in this area? Or should they be limited to close to where you work in town? I mean, is it, is it county-wide that you're saying this is open, or is it just for people in Snowmass and Aspen Village? Excuse me, Aspen-Birson Center?
Yeah, I mean, I'd stand by my answer that, that it's county-wide, you know, based on our current structure. Again, I think that's a larger discussion for the elected officials to hash out, and, and if a decision is made that the funding dollars are going to be withheld, or there's going to be a separate housing entity, just, you know, if, if 90% of the new funds that are coming in are coming through, through the RET, and, and the city of Aspen wants to set up their own, their own system because they're saying, hey, it's our money, you know, that's for you guys to, to fight out.
I think that if you look back, the, one of the first breaks and changes in the Housing Authority happened in 2001, 2003 time period when Mayor Klandereud was in office. And the thrust was at that time, which created the citizen board as opposed to having any elected, was that the city felt it was going to pull it in and start managing housing through the Capital Asset Management Department, the city, again, because there's only mitigation dollars coming in from one side and those tax revenues from the other. And the, the challenge, and I felt it certainly when I... tax revenues from the other. And the challenge, and I felt it certainly when I was on the county board, was that the development function went away. There used to be land use planners in APSHA. There used to be a look to what sort of housing was needed in APSHA. But it wasn't being funded adequately. And then the construction of anything was not being funded either. And so, that was one of the original pull-aparts that happened. But I think that we're looking at a crisis and answering to our taxpayers within the city limits. And there's a real challenge there right now to say, we'll house everyone throughout the entire Picken County with the revenues that come in from house sales in Aspen. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Just a super quick comment. Phyllis Matisse gave a great presentation. This is a couple of years ago, from a historical standpoint. And the county, and I think you were still on BOCC at the time, Rachel, is, you know, and at the time, the numbers that they came up with, and this was, this was up through and including Phase Two, don't quite hold me to this, but that, of Burlingame, excuse me, that the county had funded about forty percent of the capital assets in the APSHA program. And so, up through about twenty-fourteen, it was about a forty-sixty split. So, there tends to be a little bit of misnomer about how much money, and, you know, and this is going back to the late seventies and the start of the program. So-
Yeah. And some of it was money, but some of it was simply land use and preservation of units. And that was not the same as new construction. I think there are some real challenges going forward here.
Thanks, Rachel. Chris, thank you so much. John, you as well. Thank you for reapplying. Chris, you as well. Thank you for reapplying. We will be taking this back to our individual boards and having discussion there and come back to you with decisions.
Thank you both.
Can I offer a suggestion?
We're going to take her away and give her that TV table again.
I am. I'd like to offer a suggestion. I know the city, the county would generally discuss it in this forum, and the city does it differently, which is fine. But since we do have an applicant, when this first came out, we had one seat open, which was the one that John's reapplying for. I mean, John's had an amazing history with his efforts on the APSHA board and amazing realm of knowledge. And I would, if, would like to have the discussion of reappointing John. And then since we now have a resignation of David Lafran, I believe, correct?
Uh huh.
That opens up an open seat. And I think that would give us an opportunity to consider Chris. But I'd like to see if anybody is interested in opening it back up with an advertisement to see if there's any other applicants that may want to apply for a seat that is now open and not being applied for by what you would call the incumbent.
Patty, for what it's worth, David's seat is an alternate seat as well.
Yeah, that's true. But I just didn't know if this, the members of both the council and the BOCC would be interested in discussing that.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you, Jess.
And that's why I, my suggestion is that we take it back to our boards. Maybe that is correct in the direction that we want to go. But I'd love to have that conversation with my board.
Okay. So, John, can we look at putting, I'll look at Johnny, John Peacock?
Yes.
I'm going to look at putting some time on as soon as possible for the BOCC to discuss this so we can get this moving forward. So, please put that on my list for Thursday. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our interviews. I want to go ahead and give everybody an opportunity for a couple-minute break. If you need that at this time, go ahead and take it. We'll walk into our next conversation slowly. Is that a yes?
Oh, I don't need one, but if we're taking one, I'll-
Half an hour?
Care for a break? No?
Going for a half an hour break?
Don't need one.
All right. Then we're going to just keep going then?
Okay.
All right. Not a problem. All right. The next portion of our meeting today is going to just be an open conversation about housing. We have some items that are provided in our packet. The City of Aspen provided a little bit of landscape information as well as our housing plan. And I know that the county is interested in sharing some information about what's going on in their planning.
It's my understanding that staff has put together like five slides just to let city council know what the county has done and is doing as far as what we can do to provide affordable housing. There's some opportunities, both in-house and out-of-house.
Sounds great. So, we'll get to that presentation in just one second. Because, you know, we do need to start this conversation off with a little bit of discussion. The City of Aspen, as individual members of the council, sent a letter to the BOCC asking for just a reservation, a possible ballot question, to have that discussion around a possible tax or some kind of funding source in the county. That conversation went to the BOCC. I believe you considered it and had a discussion in a meeting. And what we heard back from that is that, at this time, the county is not interested in doing a ballot question this year, looking for more information, more formulation, really around how those funds might be utilized and the like. So, more information as you, if you were to go to a ballot question.
Can I clarify a little bit?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah. I think the end of our discussion, we kind of discussed a lot of things. But it was to, hopefully before the end of this year, possibly after the November election, have the board of commissioners sit down and have a discussion as to our thoughts moving forward and to coming up with how we would support a possible mill levy or other opportunities so that the county can start raising funds of some more level, more significant level than what we're able to do now. And that, moving forward with that, we would then be able to provide staff with direction to come back with what we would need to have a well-thought-out ballot question with information to provide to the public for voter support. And that is kind of the plan. We would like to have been able to do it this year. But in the best interest of our staff and the community and the board itself, we opted to really work towards getting something on November of two thousand and twenty-three. On a side note to that is, thanks to Steve Child and Kelly McNicholas-Curry and Francie, who sit on the Colorado Counties Inc. Board, we have presented once again to CCI for their legislative issues for this coming legislative session, which starts in January. The consideration of removing the prohibition for real estate transfer taxes out of Tabor, out of the state constitution. I still have my files from twenty years ago.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah. Keeping it, my paper files, keeping that in front of me as to the thoughts that came up then. Kelly created a really well-done PowerPoint with just the information. I have a list of contacts in the Front Range area within and out of the state government to see how best we can move it forward and get the state, hopefully get CCI support, get other organizations' support, and then move forward to getting the state legislature to put it on a ballot. Because I think that would be a huge source of revenue for Picken County. And we could use it for multiple reasons, you know, multiple issues. I mean, there's a lot to be discussed. But one of the primary goals would be to allow us to have funds for affordable housing.
There was a request to Colorado Municipal Leagues last year by the Glenwood Springs Mayor to allow a ballot measure for real estate transfer tax as well. And that organization declined. And I would caution whether going in an off-year would be good on something that's going to raise everyone's residential property.
We don't know if it would be on the two thousand and twenty-three ballot. It might take a little longer. But we did it with CCI, and it failed getting through CCI by like one or two votes. So, we're a heck of a lot closer than we were in the past. So, it's my intention in the next couple of years, especially this next coming year, to really see if we can't really garner more support for that without having to go to a statewide petition.
Steve, how?
Thank you.
So, if I could speak to that. Last year, when CCI failed by just two votes of getting it as a priority issue, we still pursued it and we got as far as the governor's office. And they kind of laughed at us for doing this in a major election year. When the governor's up for election, they absolutely did not want to have that reform of the Tabor Amendment coming in this fall's election. And so, at that point, we dropped all of our efforts and we're going to put it off to an off-year instead of a, you know, a regular major election year. For your information, there are twelve municipalities in Colorado that have a RET who had it prior to nineteen ninety-two. And they are the only entities in the state that have a real estate transfer tax. Aspen and Snowmass Village are two of them. Breckenridge has it. It's mostly resort towns. I can't remember, there might be some Front Range ones also. So, this is something we really would like, like to get, to enable counties to go to their voters or also municipalities who don't have the authority to go to their voters and ask them to approve it. So, it's not just a slam dunk. Once the state legislature gives a two-thirds majority vote in each House, then it has to go to the voters of the state of Colorado to give a fifty-five percent majority to it. Then you have to take it to your individual voters to approve a real estate transfer tax. It's a heavy lift. There is another possible way to raise money. That's through legislation that was passed this past year, which allows entities that have a lodging tax to not have to spend it on publicity, advertising their community. They can spend it on essential services for the workforce housing, for childcare for the workforce. Because the workforce is essential for keeping the resort community going. And if they don't support them, that's like, you know, not providing for the resort businesses. So, that's something that, I mean, it wouldn't do Picken County any good to pass a lodging tax because we maybe have the Redstone Inn and a couple places, I think, would be the only ones that we would have. But it could be something, I think maybe Snowmass Village has a lodging tax.
It was in the paper yesterday that Snowmass Town Council is talking about the potential of repurposing some of their marketing funds. But they do have to go to a public vote to, well, maybe not, maybe if they're just from their general fund. But you have to go to a public vote to ask your public to change the use of the marketing tax.
Yeah.
But we're aware of that. Steve, thank you.
It's the city would have to do.
Not just a thought, a possible way forward to raise some more money. And also, I'll point out, I mean, the figure I have read, and it's in your packet, that, and I think it might be all from your RET that you're getting thirty-eight million dollars from two thousand and twenty-one. Is that, is that true from the RET?
I don't know if Sarah wants to answer. We've had record collections from the RET. But we're also expecting to see quite a bit of a fluctuation down because there's no more inventory left. And it's kind of been cannibalizing future sales. I think the other thing that's interesting within the packet is the dollar cost to construct a unit now, which is probably-
A bit higher.
Very, very high. So, I don't know that that thirty-eight million, which sounds like a big deal, is going to build more than sixty units somewhere.
Yeah.
Period.
But it's, I mean, what you did prior, what the City of Aspen did prior to nineteen ninety-two, they got the RET in back then.
Yep.
I wish more entities had done it before nineteen ninety-two.
Thank you, Bill Toot.
Yeah. But it's, you know, you're getting more money now. You started out getting a low amount of money, and it's much higher now because the real estate prices have gone up across the board in resort communities anyhow. So, I just want to point that out that you have deep pockets and we have about, in our current status as a county, we have about one to two million dollars a year that we can spend on affordable housing. And we are spending it, doing buy downs.
Steve, I appreciate that so much. And I realize the dollars you have are limited to the dollars produced by new growth. Those are mitigation dollars. And if I had one request, it would be that the county do an accounting of the past fifteen years of land use approvals, how much mitigation dollars were received, and how many employees was that supposed to house, and what was the remaining balance of employees that that growth did generate and was acknowledged it generated, but that were not housed. And so, what we're all talking about is how do we catch up on the shortfall as new growth is occurring, such as Pandoras, such as STR rentals, such as the remaining, what is it, eight hundred or twelve hundred? I wish Cindy Huben was here, remaining lots in Picken County that haven't been built yet.
Yeah. And our mitigation-
That's a lot of demand coming down the pike.
Our mitigation dollars were, it was just a percentage of what the actual cost was all those years. And now we've brought it up to par where it's actually, you know, paying for the actual mitigation, just as of maybe this year, this year. All those years-
We appreciate that.
We were losing dollars that we could have been collecting and-
Well, and we're all been mitigating at sixty percent. So, that's where the forty percent unmitigated comes from, forgetting whether the dollars were adequate or not.
Is it a hundred percent now?
You're at a hundred percent of all employees now.
For any new development.
Very good.
Thanks, Steve. I'm going to go to Kelly and then Ward.
Thank you. And again, I wish I was here in the room with you all. But I just appreciate having this conversation. I think, you know, regardless of, you know, what funding source might be available, and whereas hard as I worked on trying to push the RET, you know, a possibility for a RET forward, I don't, you know, we still have the issue of needing to articulate the bounds of the, any funding, I think. And that, to me, is the crux of where the BOCC is deliberating on this issue. You know, I think there's, there's a number of passwords to generate revenue. But until we solve the question or come to an agreement about what is the appropriate expenditure for that revenue, I, you know, we, this is where we're at. And what I'd really love to, I think, work with the city on in a concerted way is to kind of come together on the development of a broader community strategic plan on housing. I think that the city has done a great job with their strategic plan. I think that there is a spectrum of housing for which the county is probably better poised to play a role. And we can all leverage each other's strengths and I think moderate some of the concerns as well. Because as we've heard already, just in our interviews with APSHA, I just kept sort of hearing like the need for revenue for solving some of the problems, which are not, which are not building problems, right? Like money for incentives, money for helping people cover repairs in a high inflation market, you know, money for buy downs of expiring deed restrictions. These are all things that are in the scope of our housing dilemmas that will require revenue sources. And, you know, I continue to sort of hope that we act with great urgency on this to figure out and articulate what an expenditure of a county housing fund would look like. But I also think it's really important, and I'm really hopeful that maybe we come together to develop out that broader spectrum of housing that goes even from how we look at homelessness solutions all the way towards the need for senior housing to kind of move people out of workforce housing and make better use of those bedrooms that are underutilized. So, that's my hope for this. I hope this is just a start of a program. I know it's been tense. I feel like there's been tension about everyone taking their ball and going in separate directions. And I hope that doesn't happen and implore us forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Quick question for the chair. Is that conversation that Kelly just was talking about between city and county, is that, is that scheduled? Do you guys have that scheduled for county?
Well, we're looking, well, it's going to be, we're trying to get through the election now. So, it'll probably be in growth management in our budget. So, I'm looking at agenda setting whenever, it could be before November, it could be after November. But it's going to be before the first of the year. So, we have direction moving forward. I'd like it to be sooner than later. Just have to work with staff to see how we can get it moving.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Ward?
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. I did not watch the meeting where our letter to county commissioners was discussed. I have to, I have to say that I was shocked and disappointed with some of the statements that were reported. So, what I'm looking for is, as I think Kelly was mentioning, that we can, we can agree upon a need and challenges and try to work out ways to achieve what a common goal is. I heard statements like, there needs to be more study. It's an Aspen problem. The lumberyard was crammed down the throat. And that was disheartening and hurtful to me as well. So, I want to put that right on the- Uh, so I want to put that right on the table and put it as a, uh, a topic to, to smooth that over and try to have us agree upon what, what our issues are. And if we do, I mean, the mountain migration study throughout, um, Mountain West, throughout the country, housing is an issue and how we address it is, is, is important for us as a city council. We have, uh, a city with the RET, we have, um, more funding mechanisms, but I think we need all to work together, um, put our shoulder to this and, uh, agree on, um, on the need, if we can agree that there's a need and that, uh, we will commit ourselves to it. We, as city council, have defined housing as a, is a top priority. I think our, how, our strategic plan is, uh, is an indication of the efforts that we and our staff have put into this and the dedication that we feel towards it. And the lumberyard discussions that we've had, uh, we had a discussion about, uh, density. And John brought, John Ward brought up density, the balance between density, open space. Um, uh, those are, those are issues that we're dealing with. And it's not just a city issue, it's, it's all of us. You have more undeveloped space in the county than the city does. But I'm really looking at, um, um, a kumbaya moment here where we can all agree to work together, um, in the same direction.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Um, thank you, Ward, for bringing that up because I, I know it's been floating around and I wanted to clarify that I definitely did not say that it's Aspen's problem. I said, it's not surprising that more money comes from Aspen than from the county because the drive for the workers comes from Aspen. And I never thought that somebody would interpret that I meant it's Aspen's problem. I don't think it's Aspen's problem, it's a valley wide problem. And we are committed and have been talking about affordable housing since I was elected. And, um, uh, you know, I think Ashley's going to take some time to explain to you guys where we are with, and where we're going with affordable housing. And then I also wanted to say that, um, I didn't think it was a divisive issue between the city and the county until after we had that meeting. And there was a newspaper article that sort of implied that was what was meant at our meeting. It certainly wasn't what was meant at the meeting. And I feel the same as you and I had lunch with John on Monday so we could talk about how, how we can come together. And that's certainly what everybody on my board wants. And I certainly believe it's what everybody on your group wants.
Thank you, Francie.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Rachel?
Yeah, thank you. I just came back from, um, two days of Club 20 meetings in Durango. And we had the, uh, education committee, the healthcare committee and the transportation committee, uh, and then followed by the tourism committee. And, uh, all three committees, as they described their work and what their challenges are and what they're doing, came down to housing. Uh, you know, it was just astounding, but, uh, the person from Centura Hospital, and they're speaking about the regional 20 county region of the issues they're facing, said that, uh, uh, traveling nurses are now getting between 125 and $150 an hour if they can find them. And that it's not the nursing shortage we all hear about. They don't have pharmacy techs, they don't have support staff, they don't have people to clean the rooms. They said they're having top level administrators doing that sort of work, just trying to keep things together in hospitals across the western slope. Uh, the transportation guys I talked to from CDOT said that, did we know we only have one maintenance driver in our region now? And they weren't sure if they were going to have two snowplow drivers and that they can't hire anybody who can live in Glenwood Springs because Glenwood Springs is unaffordable. And I think we all know Glenwood Springs is the adventure capital of America now as named by Outside Magazine. And they are getting a lot of short-term rentals there for the weekend and their residents are finding they don't need to rent long-term anymore either. They can short-term rental their units. I think that what we're all having a hard time and our business community and others are having a hard time getting our arms around is that the free market housing that has supplied 60 to 75% of Aspen's workforce and Picken County's workforce and Snowmass Village's workforce is gone. It is no longer a viable market. I think it was in the packet that was handed out to you guys, but all the free market production in the valley is producing at RO prices, second home prices, maybe the top of category four, but nothing for the, the job growth that has occurred within our region. And the Board of Realtors statistics, again, in our packet today, show that, uh, just looking at townhomes and condos, forget houses, um, have all gone up over 40% from, from rifle up, over 40% in one year from 2021 to 2022. And so I think we're really facing a, a very severe crisis. I know Francie, you've heard me saying this before and we hear it as the APCHA board with people coming to us thinking we have units somewhere hidden that we can help them with. You know, I, I have found myself a little bit at the center of this because at the APCHA board, uh, Skippy and I were asked to produce a letter to, uh, help Kelly get more traction with her board on the challenges of this issue. And that's, that's what I did. And that letter doesn't ask the county to give its money to the city or to give its money to APCHA or to lose control of it in any way, shape or form. And it was really just trying to say, can you guys start helping us out with this shortfall before we have a major market disruption, which we're starting to have already? And no one at this table has to answer to me. Uh, I, I have a limited lifetime in this occupation, but you do have to answer to your constituents and to the business owners who are all thinking, am I going to bother to re-sign the lease next year? Am I going to close early? You're, you have to answer to all the people who, whose one-year lease is now ending and they're finding there's no place left to rent and their rent went up 2,000 bucks a month. You know, this is who is creating this urgency of the situation. And the thing is that there are voices out in our community that have been talking quite loudly about how do we rethink the program? Should we start prioritizing job types? Should we start a class warfare between childcare workers and postal service delivery people who have no housing or CDOT workers or, or restaurant chefs to say who's worth more in our community? I don't think we should go down that road. I've heard people saying, well, look, you can buy graphic artists' work on, online now. You can do your accounting online now. You can do your banking online now. Do we need to house bankers anymore? Do we need to house any of these people who you can buy the service somewhere else? What's essential? And I think that that would be the most destructive thing we can start doing to our community. Is to say this job is better than that job or more important than that job. And I'm sorry, I'll just finish Tori quickly, but
Thank you.
that's where my concerns are about where the program is going. And I don't, I, I think it's been sending a pretty steady message to the people already in housing that you're the wrong people, that if you guys weren't there and just some other people who would work harder or the jobs we really need and can we move you out sooner? It's been an incredibly demoralizing discussion to a lot of people who live in affordable housing, that they're just not quite the right people doing enough work for us. Instead of acknowledging, we've lost the free market housing that has always provided 60% of our workforce. And the down-valley communities don't want to start building it for us. Most of the new developments there are clearly RO pricing or second homes. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. A quick, uh, comment if you'd like, and then I want to get Ashley to come up. Are you making a present?
I think we might want to continue until Greg might have a chance.
They seem to be on a productive track. We don't want to interrupt it.
So I wanted to say one more thing, Ward, about that meeting that you weren't at and, and the concern that we're not moving fast enough to, uh, uh, build more affordable housing. And I'm just speaking for myself right now. Um, and that is that I think the problem is more than just building affordable housing because I think it, this is one of the things I said at that meeting, is that I think it needs support beyond the building. And so I want to make sure before we add 500 more people on the periphery of Aspen, that we have ways to accommodate them and take care of them in places where they can buy their groceries, where they can go to play softball, where they go to buy what they need so that we're not setting up a complete reverse commute situation where the people have to drive down valley to have the rest of their lives besides their work. So that was one of the things I was talking about. And if it looks like that's an impediment to quickly building affordable housing, perhaps it is. But I think that the, the whole, um, problem needs to go a little bit deeper to meet the needs of the workers that we're trying to house.
I don't know, Greg. Greg, did you want to say anything?
Can I say a clarifying question just for?
Um, I, I'm going to say something, I think, uh, as, as we learn in our working agreements, that silence implies consent. And, and so I just want to say I'd better say something here. I really want to thank everybody for this conversation. I appreciate, um, everybody here and everybody's concern and what they, what, uh, what I've heard today. And I, I know Rachel's concern is genuine. I know everyone else's concern is genuine, Ward. I believe I hurt your feelings and I'm sorry, I'm truly sorry. You and I have gotten into it before and we always seem to work it out and I'm confident we will. Um, I disagree with you on a lot of things. Um, uh, and I'm sure I disagree with everybody here on some things. So that's just me. Um, the first thing I want to ask is that, uh, I think, I think, the thing I want to say is that the letter that came to us did take me off guard in particular because it looked like an ask to, uh, to, to raise money from the taxpayers without any real specific, a specific ask. And, and, um, you know, I guess that maybe that's the first thing that I, you know, that's what I think I, I need to make sure I understand who it's for, where it's going, who's going to get it, what's it going to cost? At what cost to the community will it be? And what other growth will it generate? And, and, uh, I know you're in a hurry and you want to get it on the ballot, so I understand the urgency of it. Um, but when I look a little bit farther, I see, you know, I started wondering what assumptions have been made and what assumptions have been made and then codified as if they are facts about, um, what we need to do. I know Rachel has very serious concerns, which have created guardrails for the way she wants to move forward. Um, I think I have issues with many of those. And I know it's a sticky, difficult problem, but I think that for me to move forward, understand what you're talking about and what you're asking us for, I want to know specifically what the ballot would look like and what it would be asking for. And thank you for clarifying who gets to spend the money. But I also want to know what other alternatives there might be. And I am really interested in having that conversation and I'll dedicate a lot of my time to that and I'll be looking out to the community for alternative solutions and answers to some of these questions. Because what we're trying to tackle here, it's kind of like trying to tackle climate change. We, we have a global problem. We have a national problem with housing. As you so articulately said, we have, every community in our state has a huge housing problem. Okay? We, we've been very lucky and we've been, been very force directed, people keep, before us to get things started 40 years ago. And we've been incredibly successful in building housing. So in some ways we're much better off than others. Yet we still have recurring problems with housing seasonal workers and, and, and workforce that, uh, essential workforce that may not be as savvy as other people on how to get in and how to play and how to work the system. So yes, I have a lot of questions and I, and I promise that I'll participate. And I'm also going to be soliciting participation from across the county and from within the APCHA, uh, the APCHA community. Because like you, and like John said, I'm so grateful to him for saying it, there's a lot of distrust, concern and fear in, in our APCHA housing. And I, and I wonder if sometimes that maybe APCHA's gotten so big, uh, that really we're becoming a company town. And, and, um, I don't like the smell of that. And so I'm trying to figure out what other solutions we'd have, what other partnerships we could create, what other investment mechanisms we could come up with to find solutions that work. So we don't have a huge population that's living in inequity and living in fear. That's where I am. I, I could go on, but I think it's time to let Ashley take it from here. I apologize in advance for any naivete I might have. Um, but I also want to, uh, let you know that this is a huge concern to me and I look forward to the conversation. Thanks.
Well, to be clear, um, you know, the letter was written just to have you reserve the possibility of a ballot question to have this discussion or part of this discussion. And we are really grateful to hear your opinions and your voices, uh, about what you, what you're thinking. I mean, Francie, you very much clarified, uh, what was quoted in the paper is not, uh, really reflecting your sentiment. Um, so that, that's very helpful. Greg, your comments, um, are interesting to me because you have been so involved, um, in our community as a leader and somebody that understands the dynamic that's going on. And to hear you have so many questions that I feel are appropriate for you to be having discussion about and answering, um, is, is interesting to me. I'm going to, I'll come back to you in a minute. I want to remind everybody that this meeting is scheduled till 6:00 PM. That's 15 minutes. Um, so we are gonna, we're gonna go around for a couple of comments. I ask for brevity and clarity and we'll go as fast as we can through everybody's comments. Skippy was next.
Well, I just wanted to follow up and, I mean, in respect for everyone's schedule, this is about the most important conversation we can have. And so I'm perfectly comfortable going over so we can have a quality conversation. And if you guys aren't, then let's pick it up and do it later, but let's do it quality, let's not rush it.
Would you like to hear Ashley's five minute, I think it's five minutes, five slides?
Just hold down the presentation. I think maybe we, we should do it another time.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted, just wanted to see if they were.
I asked him earlier.
Okay. Well, I know. Well, I got, I got different advice to let the conversation go on, so I kind of got caught in the middle. So sorry.
So Greg, I appreciate it, you know, I haven't, I haven't heard, um, much from you and I think it's just, look, uh, diversity of opinions, uh, it's a feature, not a bug, right? So disagreement is, is completely fine, it's welcome, but what we seek is, is understanding. And I get to work with Francie. So when I read that quote, I thought, well, I, I know the broad strokes of, of Francie's thoughts and, you know, I've talked to Patty Pliny and we've talked about housing emergency, you know, at the beginning of COVID and all this. So I kind of know where she's coming from and certainly Kelly the same on APCHA board, et cetera. Um, but for you, Greg, and really you, Steve, you know, I kind of don't know philosophically where you're coming about and how you think about these. Greg, I hear a lot of concerns. I hear a lot of desire for more information. Um, but I, but I also hear you, uh, making some comments that indicate to me that you have some deeper concerns about the direction of housing and, and how we're taking in the community. So can you just kind of help me understand how you think about these things? What is important to you and where you might think, uh, maybe you would think differently than the rest of us would be super helpful just to have clarity?
Sure. I've got, how much time do I have? Um, I'm, I do have to wrap shortly after 6:00, just want to warn you all. You know, there's, there's a lot here and so I, uh, I appreciate you asking that question. You know, I do have concerns. I do have trust issues and it's also, it's not be, just me alone. I'm not out here in my own little bubble. I, I do hear from the community that they don't feel as if they're particularly being heard or being, uh, cared for. And I guess that's something you're going to have when you have a system that is, is really fraught with the, what, what can you call it? The inequities of all the various covenants. And so nobody follows the same rules. And so of course you're going to have a lot of that. I don't want to grow that bigger. I don't want to grow that bigger. I think that, um, in, in addition to hearing some serious dissatisfaction, maybe that's all I get is dissatisfaction. I do know there are happy people living in housing. I was grateful and happy when I lived in it. I was also grateful to be out of it for a number of reasons I won't go into. But, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we can come up with solutions to just make it easier for everyone, not only the owners and investors and the people who are putting money, the taxpayers, but also for the residents. And that, that's a conversation that's going to go on a lot longer than tonight. I do feel as if, uh, the lumberyard in particular, such a long drawn out, uh, project, had a lot of people who were very upset, concerned about air quality, sound quality, quality of life, quite frankly, their, uh, location issues. Polls that were put out that never really asked the questions people wanted to, to be asked. And I still have reserved questions about that. I know there's a huge demand to add more housing. I'm wondering, um, if we don't have, we may be forced to look at these, these essential workers that, that are brought up and are mentioned in your own documents. And we may have to rethink our priorities. It'd be nice to make, keep it open and invite everyone because that's. It'd be nice to keep it open and invite everyone because that's just so easy. But the fact is, I think we're going to be, need to be making hard choices. When we look at growing the population of our community by, you know, double digits, what are we actually doing? And really, is this going to improve the quality of life for all the residents? We have an affordable housing now, as well as everyone else in the community who cherishes what used to be a small town. I don't think we have, it's pretty scary when we talk about putting in massive apartment blocks, which is really what Lumberyard will be. You know, how much more of that do we want before everybody notices a change in their quality of life? It's possible that that has happened. And so I think that the best thing I can offer at this point is to continue the dialogue with you and to be part of the loyal opposition. Because I hear the arguments and I have empathy. But I also have empathy for the people who live here and vote and care about the scale and size of our community and all the other problems we'll be creating by growing it bigger. Not even getting into the climate issues and the resource issues, which seem to be forgotten as soon as we talk about building more affordable houses. And I think that that's super important. So that's where I am for now, I don't want to take up all your time.
No, I super appreciate that, Greg. The clarity is beautiful and welcome, as is the divergent opinion. So I look forward to sharing my thoughts later.
Thanks, Skippy. I'll go back to Rachel.
Yeah, no, I was going to follow up as well. And if you can be a little more specific, Greg, I'm just, having read the questions you asked in the paper, you said it's time to rethink the program. Do you think it should become all rental only or something like that? So there can be this more effective turnover and placement of the right type of essential workers? And you asked the question, who do you think it is for? Do you no longer think the community plan goals apply? And who do you think it's for? Who would you like to see all the units, when people resell in Aspen Village? Do we tell them the type of jobs they can sell to? Or, you know, who do you think the program is for?
Thanks, Rachel. I think that's a loaded question, as I always expect from you.
You asked the question. You were the one who said we should rethink who the program's for, so I'm asking you your own question.
I hear you're making your points as you ask it and I appreciate that, you're very good at that. This is a difficult problem. I don't think we can go back to anybody who's in affordable housing right now and demand anything from them. It's not already in their deed or in the restrictions in which they've agreed to own that unit. That's pretty clear to me. So that's the short answer to your question.
Who do you think future units should be for, Greg?
Okay, Rachel, you know, I think these are going to be tough, these are the tough choices. If the snow plodder driver can't figure out a way to get into housing here and we have the ability to say, through perhaps a partnership between a business and one of the entities, the city or the county, or, you know, for city or county workers, we can choose and we can offer housing to people that we deem essential to keep the services for our community going. I'm concerned that we're not going to get our streets plowed, as you say, or our highway plowed. So I think that we can start making choices like that and we're going to have to. The numbers I keep seeing have gone from anywhere to maybe what? 30% of our housing stock is inhabited by wonderful people. You know, and I think 30% is the real estate and the property management agencies. Essential people for our tourism economy. But I also think that perhaps we have an overheated real estate market. Do we want to keep housing more realtors? I'm going to ask that question now. Because it doesn't seem equitable to the people who may not be as savvy financially or as prepared financially to get in. And so I'm concerned that in the interest of making community housing, we're actually, we're actually shooting ourselves in the foot. Because what we really need to do is focus on essential services. And that's what it comes down to. So, yep, we're going to have to make choices, that's what I think. And, you know, it's a tough one to say, but that's where I am.
Thanks, Greg. I've got a point of clarification from Patty.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that we appreciate what Greg is saying. The board has not had this discussion as a board. It'll be part of our discussions moving forward. For right now, what Greg is saying is Greg's position and it is not the position of the board.
Thank you, Patty. I will say that these are my thoughts. This is what I'm hearing from people I speak to in the community. And I'm not speaking for my board, as you all know. Thanks.
But thank you for sharing.
I want to quickly just add something, just for clarification on my part. I have always been a supporter of affordable housing, I continue to be. I'm really willing, ready, and able to find a way to fund it. And we're going to all need to be working on this together. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. I'm going to go to Ward, and then Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. You mentioned a couple of words that I think is going to go way beyond tonight's discussion. But I, I thank you for bringing them up, distrust and fear. I think we have to dive into that more and not tonight. But, you know, it's, it's important that we all listen to each other and that, and thank you, Francie, for setting me, my feelings at ease. And Greg, you and I can have our disagreements and hopefully with those disagreements, we're going to arrive at solutions that meet all of our expectations. But this is, if we can all agree that we have to talk about it. And thank you, Greg, for having the strength and courage to mention trust and fear. Because it's something that we need to put out on the table and resolve. Thanks.
Thanks, Ward.
That was nice, thank you.
Steve?
So I wanted to highlight several things, the county, a lot of what we've achieved is through partnerships. And using the example of the Basalt Vista project, which was, we put in $3.5 million to build the infrastructure. The school district put in the land. Holy Cross put in a lot of the solar, solar equipment and the battery storage. And Habitat for Humanity stepped up to the plate and in four years built 27 units. One of the residents there added up the full-time jobs that those 27 units are filling and they came up with 47 full-time jobs of the people who are living in 27 units at Basalt Vista.
Great project.
That was a great project.
Project, it took four years to build. But those kind of project partnerships are the kind of things that is something we continue to do and will continue to do. One possible partnership would be with Rafta to build housing for bus drivers because they're short 30 drivers right now. So they're not running a full schedule of buses. That just helps to exasperate the traffic. The whole growing for valley is near gridlock at times of the day at different locations in the valley. Not just the entrance of Aspen, but in Elgabel and in Glenwood Springs. So it's a valley, a valley wide problem. So those kind of partnerships and our available pieces of land, some are in Elgabel. The one in Aspen that is a possibility would be the Forest Service land at the S-curves. Is a possible site for doing a partnership with, where we would put in some of the money. The Forest Services has the land that they want to lease. So those kind of things are what we can do without a whole lot of money to try to leverage what money we have. So I just wanted to put that out, that, you know, we're working on these, these different projects. We're planning on building up to maybe 17 more units at Phillips and that would maybe be another habitat, potentially a Habitat for Humanity project there. So we have things in the works. It's incremental, it's not like the, you know, big project, like your lumberyard project is multi, more than 100 units. And we're doing projects that are less than 100 units, but we're doing what we can and will continue.
Thank you, Steve. You know, for us, for the entirety of the program, as long as it's been around, this has been something that is looked at as valley wide, county wide. We continue that as our view. We recognize that we may be Aspen City Council members, but really this housing situation, I hate using the word crisis even though it is, extends from Aspen to the far reaches of Redstone. There's changes that are going on in Redstone, Carbondale, Basalt, that are all intertwined. So we very much are not looking at this from a provincial way whatsoever. We look for the opportunity to be working with the county as much as possible because we recognize, of course, our community members live from here throughout the entire county and beyond. So we really appreciate this opportunity to talk with you, to get clarity on how you feel about housing in our valley, not just in Aspen. Because truly, this is a regional issue. We are here as county seat and to support you as well. The letter that was written and asking for that ballot question was really just that. Our attempt to say, hey, we support you and we think that your community members and your constituents support the efforts of housing as well. So we are at the table literally right now, but we are at the table for the long haul as well. John, I'm going to go to you, we haven't heard from you tonight.
Yeah, just really quick. I just want to say I can't pick up a newspaper without reading about the housing crisis. It's one entity or another who is struggling to find employees. And the major reason they can't is because of housing. I've been up and down the valley recently. You can't walk around downtown without seeing help wanted signs in nearly every storefront and every restaurant window. And it's the same down in Glenwood and Carbondale. This is not, this is not just Aspen's problem. This is the whole valleys and frankly, all of Colorado and the world. And I want to thank Francie for meeting with me to discuss how do we go forward between our two boards? So, great first step, I look forward to more progress. Thanks.
Skippy, I'll take a comment from you. Yep, I'll try to be concise as I can be and just leave us with some thoughts that you want. First and foremost, so helpful to actually sit down and get to know where you're coming from. I'd like to do more of that, I think we all would. It's very difficult to have a conversation through the newspaper. No offense to the newspaper, but context and face to face really helps fill in the dots. So I would encourage us, one to one or otherwise, to get clearer on where we're all coming from. You know, Greg, you mentioned climate change as another national, global issue. This is a global issue, but it is divergent from climate change in that we can't put a biodome over Aspen or over Picken County and solve for just our climate. But we can solve our housing problem in our backyard. And so it's our responsibility to do that, being mindful of the fact that the inputs are broader than our community. I think there's opportunity for partnership, that's what we seek. You know, Rachel's, Rachel bringing the issue forward has brought us here and we're lucky for that. That's really important. You know, Rachel's comment about housing where we live may be the choice that everyone in the valley makes. That probably makes the most logical sense. But we can get there through a collaborative discussion where we all agree that's what we want and figure out the tools together of how to get there. Rather than, you know, as was said, sort of taking our toys back to our toy box. I think there's a better way we get to that result. And so just to seed the conversation in service of doing that, we are doing a lot in housing. We cannot solve this problem on our own. And when we can't, it will fail for the entire valley, not just for Aspen, not just for Picken County. So we need better partnership that will require additional funds. It will require reforming the system. And Greg, what you say and what, you know, frankly, a lot of individuals who approach the conversation in a troubling style have raised a lot of great points, which were long overdue. The right sizing conversation, the capital reserves conversation, the standards for sellers conversation. Those are happening because of those voices of quote unquote opposition, but I would not call them opposition. I would call them helpful informants, as you are. So I think we can work on those and we must work on those now. But if we don't also add to the stock while we do them, the entire community ethos will die while we do it, including for those residents who are here. Just the last bit I'll say is kind of where we're going. You know, we have our traditional model where we build new stuff, but we recognize that we don't want physical growth of buildings forever either and that sprawl and density don't serve us either. So a development neutral program is where we're headed. What does that look like? Looks like raising new revenues through a short-term rental tax, looking at vacancy in the future, these things that have displaced residential use. And then doing one of two things, either buying down existing units for a forever deed restriction or partnering with the development community so they can develop the things that we say we need and earn money from doing that. There will be opportunities in the county where both of those things are more cost efficient. Maybe they make sense in partnership in that way. What does your land use code look like to empower those things? Where can it protect open space versus where are the centers where you'd want to have those type of projects or where our dollar goes further? So I think, you know, there's the revenue side, but there's also the landing of units, creative partnership and rule-setting side. And I would encourage you guys to be thinking about all of those as we move forward.
Can I just, real quick? And then I will really stop.
I'd like to tag on to Skippy also, if I may.
Yeah, real, real quick, I want to thank Kelly for helping with Rachel and getting this, you know, pushed forward. But we're rarely involved with the regional housing authority issue. That's an opportunity for funding, for partnerships, for everything. City of Aspen is directly involved. So that's taking it outside Picken County, it's taken outside city limits, growth boundaries. It's taking it on a regional level. And that's a huge effort that we all need to be involved in and supportive of.
Hundred. Greg, quick comment?
Yeah, quick comment was, I want to thank Skippy for his comment, I do appreciate that. Yes, sometimes I feel like I'm alone out here, possibly because I'm in a COVID household right now. So I can't be there in person, maybe it would be different if I was there. So I think that the question I'd like to ask everyone as we go forward, including myself, is, you know, what assumptions are we making here? And what would failure to do what we think has to be done look like? What would a pause look like? Or what would a complete stop in what APSHA does look like? I think we need to contemplate the abyss that we're so afraid of as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Can we discuss those points at another time?
Yes, I got plenty of thoughts if you want to talk one to one, Greg.
All right, first, we're going to wrap this up now. I want to just clarify one thing.
She has two now, one digital, one real.
Hi, Kelly.
Could high five yourself if you go to the corner, Kelly.
How'd you figure that one out? Kelly, you're on mute.
All right, thank you. You know, Greg, I always appreciate what I think is a bit of a minority voice, but you're bringing it to the table because these are not invalid concerns. And I would just like to request some action items moving forward for our joint boards. You know, I do, we as the VSCC have wanted APSHA to come and help us understand more about the structure of the rules and utilization of the inventory. I think this could be a really valuable conversation for both of our boards to hear at the same time. And perhaps this is something we try to schedule in the near term for another joint meeting on this. Because it always, you know, I, we always just understand more about the program structure when we start to ask about things like prioritization and stuff. And the considerations that APSHA has thought through over time about it that can illuminate considerations for us, for our boards. So I want to put that out there as a suggestion and see if there's interest. Additionally, I think it would really, you know, as the Regional Housing Coalition puts together their strategic plan, which is really based on a development neutral strategy right now. So we're not talking about Burks and order on the ground, we're talking about conversion of units and better utilization and all things that I actually think are pretty low hanging fruit for us to agree on. So as their strategic plan comes together, I'd love for our boards to come back together and really fill in a broader, you know, community plan for the whole spectrum of housing, like I mentioned at the beginning here. Because we're going to have different strengths and it's going to identify where the revenue voids are. Because again, we're talking about, you know, solutions I think we can agree on. And the question is, well, how are we going to pay for it? So I don't think that question goes away. But I think that we can figure that out after we have put an agreed upon framework together for how we would spend taxpayer dollars. So that to me would be something in the vein of like an EOTC retreat we've done in the past. And maybe we look to schedule that sometime in the first half of next year. So just a couple of action items I'd like to propose for consideration in the near term and the short term. And in the meanwhile, the VSCC will wrestle with our own conversation about what we think the guardrails are that we need. Thanks.
Thanks, Kelly. I think everybody's supportive of continuing the conversation. So looking at the managers in the room, I'm sure that they will have some input about how we can most have a constructive conversation going forward. can most have a constructive conversation going forward. So uh Kelly, we'll take your uh, your suggestions to heart and uh get working on those. Uh real quickly, I wanna finish up here by clarifying 2021 affordable housing ret dollar revenue was $21 million. Um and we are going to uh allow an introduction right now. Sarah would like to introduce a new policy analyst who will be um, you know, participating in these discussions as we go forward.
Thank you, Mayor Tori. Uh just briefly, um B O C C members and city council members, I wanna introduce to you Liz Axberg. Liz started with us this week. And in 20, in preparation of the 2022 budget, city council authorized funding for a full-time affordable housing policy analyst. Um and Liz is joining us to fill those roles, uh that role. Um so she'll be working city of Aspen policy and supporting the Apsha staff in some of their program policy analysis work. Uh one of the things I love about Liz is, is there's, she's a little bit of a unicorn in that her undergraduate degree is in public policy and economics. You usually don't do those two at the same time. You usually do one and then the other. Um uh but Liz is joining us from Minnesota and has spent some years in the nonprofit world before coming uh to the city of Aspen. So you will be seeing her around at Apsha board meetings and at city council meetings.
Welcome.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
I, I wanted to thank the sta, your staff. I just wanted to thank you guys for the packet that you sent us. It obviously was well thought out, had incredibly interesting information in it. And I really enjoyed it. Well, thank you.
Yeah, and I wanna thank uh the county staff for putting together a great presentation that we didn't get to see.
Yeah, right. I bet it was the most amazing presentation we would have ever seen.
Now, now she's gonna punish me for making her.
If you do wanna send it over to us, we'd be happy to take a look at it. So if you wanna share it digitally, we'd be happy to see it.
Thank you, Liz.
We'll use it to T M, whatever.
All right. Uh we're at about nine after the hour. You guys, thank you for uh this uh open discussion. I think that was very productive. Um and we have a call for more of this coming in the near future. So uh we will again uh look to our managers to be scheduling how we can make this uh as fruitful as possible.
And I apologize for trying to run the meeting when I told you it was your house and your ballgame. Just try.
You're sitting right here. You couldn't help yourself.
Awesome memory. Put her on the paper next time.
I'm gonna call for adjournment of our joint meeting today. Thank you guys so much. Kelly, thank you for joining us.
Thanks, Kelly. Greg, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's time for us to get together again. It's been a long time since we've
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sometimes it feels like we're in separate universes.
I'm going down Friday morning to hang out with Grandma and Big Sammy.